My other one, I don't know if I have another one. I'm starting the meeting, so it's gonna go live right now.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna call this meeting order. This is a regular session of the Mayor and Council, City of Bisbee. County Coach, State of Arizona, it's being held on Tuesday, November the seventh at seven P M. at our council meeting.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill. Councilmember Joni Giacamino. Councilmember Frank Davis. Mayor Ken Budge. Councilmember Leslie Johns is excused. Councilmember Mel Sweet. Mayor Pro Tim Anna Klein. City staff, Stephen Pocken, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Joelle Landers, personnel director, Matthew Gurney, public works director, Jay Ritchie, deputy police chief, Tim Cox, police chief, Jim Richardson, fire chief, and Joe Estes is not here. Okay.
All right. For a moment of silence, I'm gonna ask everybody to just stand and and think about what I think a moment of self-reflection and then we'll say that that's the allegiance. Well, so for tonight, for my announcements, I have a couple of really honored things I always like to do, which is make a couple of presentations for two of our firefighters. And one's for ten years. I just call him Captain Nick. And our other one is for twenty, for Brandon, Captain Brandon, who I don't think people realize that how important it is to have this longevity so that we have a connection from what the past is and what is now, and that is passed on to the new recruits and and that knowledge is just, you can't gain it any other way than being here. So it's super important that and I'm very proud that we have well, one of them that's actually almost, could retire if he wanted, although not. And another one that's ten years long. So I'm gonna ask you to come forward and, and let's see. We have one that was hired in Brandon in eight, ten, eight, twenty oh three. And Captain Nick, you were hired in nine, twenty-two, twenty thirteen. So, wow. That's when I retired. You know, this is this one is special. Not the mayor, but I'm gonna add in on your announcements. I wanna make note of the fact that there are two fire divided still on the city payroll during the day I should about to work. Ah, so Brandon is one. The other one is, was, you know, fire chief down at the city, we're just saying. But all of these guys, especially put up with some of us, so I wanna add my personal congratulations, Brandon. You've been a positive influence on our community and literally lifesavers to our community. As city manager, having worked with you, particularly with Brandon over the last, I don't know, eighteen years, it's been special. And so, thank you very much. I very appreciate it. No, guys, it's, it's, it's something of it's so rare. It seems like the new brain just wants to move around and really that, that knowledge that you have. What was it? You were asking somebody, one of the new street calls, wasn't the fire department? Where some streets were in Disney. It was kind of a, you know, an eye opener that yeah, I've been there a while, there's a lot of street names and they hide in really weird places. So, so, yeah, it's, it's really important to decide that. Again, thanks so much and, and whatever, just keep you guys living away in Disney. I saw a bunch of you out in Hurryup today in the conversation, said, go buy us, let's get some training going. All right, thank you so much. One last thing, I'm just going to announce real quickly about the cemetery tour. Since Friday anxiety night starts at six P M., if you're interested, please show up. There's plenty of, even the high school are working there and it should be a good chance to to have a different view of things. All right. Nothing else, I'm gonna move on to general business. So, I'm gonna move on to calling, sorry. Having a pretty find out, and then I'll start with the top. Kathy, you have the, off of the list.
I left room for somebody else to sign a document.
Oh, yeah, you did.
I did. No, you did. I was so full. Kathy Soden, thirty-four oh five, West Highway eighty, Bisbee. I'm here to talk about Festival of Lights. In two thousand twelve, we moved the Festival of Lights to City Park, and the reason was the impact of the street closure, really bad effective retailing instances. One of the reasons street closures kill us is because the locals won't come into town and the streets are closed, so we lose all of the local traffic. And the Friday after Thanksgiving is called Black Friday because it's, it's like the beginning of the shopping season. It's supposed to be a really good shopping. I have no idea why it was moved back to Main Street after eight successful years in City Park. We were up to three to four hundred people in City Park, and Main Street won't even hold that many people. Plus, there's no fencing and the kids can run around loose and it's just not desirable. The other thing is, I wrote a letter to the mayor and city manager on October twenty-sixth, asking if the location was open for discussion, and I was told, no, it wasn't. It was too late to change the venue to City Park. On October twenty-seventh, I wrote a letter to the city manager and mayor requesting that we move the event across the street to Brass Park so that no street, street closure is necessary. I think Santa would look a lot nicer sitting on the steps of the museum than sitting on a little folding chair in a parking space in front of the post office. I'm still waiting for a response, and that's why I'm here. Nobody, neither one of them responded to me about the Brass Park idea. There are two major parties we have to consider here. There are the children who want to have a good time for Christmas and the merchants who are tax base. And Black Friday is one of the busiest shopping days of the year. So I don't understand why we don't respond in a manner that considers both of those groups, instead of arbitrarily just moving it into the middle of the street because we did it that way for forty years. So the next, so I would really like to ask that you reconsider. I don't think moving it a block across the street is a big deal. The volunteers will find you. And I wanna read something about last year's event that Kelly Gallagher wrote because she couldn't be here tonight. She said, last year, the Festival of Lights closed Main Street all day. There was only one vendor on Main Street, a leather goods booth roughly in front of Fifteen Main. The festivities didn't start until late afternoon, but the street was closed all day, and it truly was a very sleepy day for shoppers. And Kelly and I have talked to people, almost everybody's on Square, we all saw a big dip in revenue last year as opposed to the year before when it was the City Park. So when you have one street closing, it has a big impact. So that's all I have to say. I just hope that next year we maybe get together and talk this through and come up with a better solution.
Thank you. Moving on. Hey. Sorry, Margaret? Really? I never know.
I'm here to talk about the Festival of Lights. My understanding last year, you thought it simply wasn't okay, so randomly just put it in front of the conference center. I was incredibly disappointed. I thought it had zero spirit, zero feeling of togetherness. It was like being thrown out in the middle of the street. My granddad attended it, and it was just a huge disappointment compared to what we were doing at City Park through the, you know, the hard work of a lot of volunteers. But I, I really don't see why this was the solution to close it to businesses. And I was talked to by many business owners. Several of them came to me and were very concerned that the whole street is closed off for an entire day when I, I don't even know if we have a lot of vendors signed up for it and we're depriving business owners on Black Friday of all days. We wanna, and we have many festivals that are held in other parts of the city. What I was told by somebody is that it's too late to change the decision and get it back to City Park. I think that eventually that's where it should be because it was absolutely magical. It was a magical thing. Last year, it was, it was a real buzzkill. My grandkids didn't even want to go sit in Sam's lab. And Santa was very disappointed when he heard that from me, because it was, it's an intimidating situation. There's no seating. You can't see anything. It just, it doesn't work. And I, Tracy from the farmer's market, she told me that what David would like to see, and I think it's a good idea, is to move it to this, to the Brass Park for just this year and then maybe work next year towards getting it back to City Park where it really is, it's like a home. This is more like, you know, and then the businesses are being private business for the whole day. And I, I don't get that. You know, we're gonna move our tax base, tax base business owners over for a couple of vendors who may or may not show up, may or may not come back, and don't really add anything much compared to what our business owners and we owe them that. You know, that's the revenue that this is a lot. It's from people like my tenants. I have five businesses that run from me there and it's not there to anybody. I don't concern the interest of anybody. And that's all I have. So I hope you could consider and move it to the Brass Park because that would at least provide some safety and comfort for the kids that are gonna attend. Because out in the middle of the street is not a great place.
Thank you both. This, this did come for us and when we approved it some weeks ago, so. All right. Moving on, we have one more for call the public. No one?
I'm here to talk about body cams at the dispartment. So the city council, the minutes, sorry, this time. So the city council okay payments for body cams on June sixth. They okay the policy on June twentieth. Now you're in early November and Disney Police still don't have body cams. Why? Because Chief Cox has yet to sign the policy. It's on the website. If on the website, go to the Bisbee Police website and you'll see where there's the adopted policy. And if you go down, scroll to the bottom and it's not signed. So why are we coming up on behalf of here where taxpayer dollars have paid for body cams and the D P D refuses to use? My question is, why is it? Thank you.
Just ten second point of information, Senator. Body cams were introduced to you at the last council meeting and demonstrated by Deputy Chief. The policy has been signed. If the signed copy isn't on the website, then
We will ensure that it is.
Signed copy, please. But body cams are used.
All right, thank you. All right, now we'll move on to general business. We have
I know that we pay accounts payable and the amount of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and two cents, subject to availability of funds.
Do I have, anyone wants to speak to anyone?
I just have one.
Okay.
Page ten. And we have a a payment for bi-pick landscaping, pruning a large cyclical tree. Is this, just want to know, is this company has a contract for that? It's a one-time deal or why did we have them do it? We don't have the equipment, just some clarification that, and it's an even number, two thousand and three hundred dollars. There you stand.
Yeah.
That is for the, the two big trees that are in the lower Vista. They have, there is one branch that fell a couple of months ago and another one even recently. And the one, the other big tree in the middle of this, of the lower circle was, had a lot of dead branches on it. And so we need, we want, we're trying to keep this tree alive, so we wanna get a professional in here to prune it down right and to also take care of the, the other trees so we don't have dead branches falling on, you know, people during, you know, Saturday market and stuff like that, so.
I mean, the amount, two thousand and three hundred dollars for that, for many hours.
How many hours?
Yeah.
I'm not sure how many hours that was off the top of my head, but.
Okay, maybe you've got some information.
Anyone else? Seeing none?
We don't have a second. Thank you.
All right, motion second to approve accounts payable, subject to availability of funds. Amount of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and two cents, all over the favor, second by my saying aye.
Aye.
Full name, very none the ayes have it. Before I move on to the consent agenda, I have Mr. Miller, did, did you want the speech? If you did, I would pull this, but it's not going. Okay? Thank you. Okay, so on the consent agenda, we have one item, which is in three of the minutes. For August seventeenth, we have two resignations. One been a board of adjustments, coming for the Bisbee Arts Commission, and we have three appointments, one to the Air Department Library, one to Bisbee Arts, and then one to the City Service Commission. If they have anything they wanna, well, we'll talk. I would put in a motion for a consent agenda.
I know that we approved the consent agenda, items A to F.
I'll second that. We have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as listed, items A to F, all those in favor, second by my saying aye.
Aye.
Those names, very none the ayes have it, so. Hello, a lot of old business, this stuff. This is one we put on hold last week. Yeah, new. And especially possible to to eliminate late fees and overdue library material for all patrons by currently adopting the resolution R dash twenty-three oh four, amending the library exception relating to library, library or vines in the city please. Ready soon?
Did she sign, she send up? Is there a call to the public first?
Well, Allison, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Staff. My name is Allison Williams. I'm a library service person, program coordinator for the Publicine Library. And I prepared something so that I wouldn't go on. We are thrilled to have been nominated by Congressman Ralph Rahalva for the National Medal of Twenty Twenty Four. Our award-winning services and programs have been acknowledged nationally, and yet we are behind the curve on this once often. Going crime-free helps to raise barriers to library use that disproportionately affect low-income households. Libraries provide a significant social benefit to low-income patrons since it allows them to access a wide variety of materials and services without having to spend additional funds. Funds create an obstacle to library access that can be harder for those patrons to overcome compared to other borrowers. And I'd just like to point out that ten cents a day might seem negligible to many of us, and we max that out at five dollars per item, but if you don't have a car and you can't drive to Safeway to buy your gallon of milk for three dollars and fifty cents, you have to walk to the nearest gas station to buy your gallon of milk for eight dollars and fifty cents or nine dollars. And if you have a choice between a gallon of milk and paying your library fines, you are most likely gonna buy the gallon of milk. So it really affects the most low income in our, in our community. At the Copper Queen Library, we are dedicated to removing barriers, and first we identify them and then we remove them or build bridges. This is a barrier. And we would like to provide access to more people by removing fines. We have found that parents who have to choose between fines and other essentials like food will simply not come to the library. Those are people who feel that, they feel guilty for not paying even fifty cents, and then they don't bring their kids. If they owe even a small amount of money, and this includes not bringing their children to our free programs. It's not just about checking out books. It's that they won't come to our programs. Paying fines is not accountability. It is punishment and deeply affects patrons who live in poverty. Seventy-five percent of the Bisbee Unified School District students qualify for free or reduced lunches, and those are the same families that are currently directly impacted by fines. We have worked hard to make sure every citizen knows that they are a stakeholder in the library, and that means increasing program attendance as well as increasing patron card holder. Please provide more access. Thank you so much for your, putting it upon the agenda. We appreciate it.
Okay. Just gonna go back a minute. We considered this. I asked, I asked you to give it a trial basis and bring back some information, and that's what we're getting tonight, and so that way we make an informed decision versus on us versus maybe what's happening in another library or state. So.
Go ahead, Jason. Go ahead. Okay, well, I'll give you then, Mayor and Council, City Staff. So I did put together some statistical PowerPoint slides to reflect the data that we've gathered over the past, it's been there than six months now, but but I just also wanna make it clear that the results, it's a combination of everything we're doing. It's, we can't say that it's just because we eliminated fine for that period that all of a sudden we're doing all these, you know. Everything is looking so good. So it's, it's a
I'll share the screen real quick so people can see it.
Okay, so the, the first slide is going to be
Maybe. There you go. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, the first graph there. Okay, this was compiled by the Coaches County Library District, and this shows our overdue and assumed loss. Those are items that were three weeks beyond the due date and not returned. So there's a lot going on here. We've had the COVID pandemic where people, we were encouraging people to keep their things at home and not leave. But you can see in two thousand and twenty-three that overdoses and lost materials have declined. And also, there's other things at play here. We do have automatic removes that patrons, they don't have to do anything. If, if the item is not being someone else is not wanting the item or having places on hold, it just gets automatically renewed. So that's working in our favor as well, but I think this just really shows a lot in terms of people not keeping things forever and taking advantage of the situation. So I love that graph. And then the next one.
Excuse me.
Yes.
For, I'm sorry, I think you're moving the page. Probably the people at home can see this better than we can. The first line is that fifteen?
Oh, that's, sorry. Good Lord.
Yes.
The increments go up?
Yeah.
Increment's fifteen, okay. Thank you. That's all.
And then this one shows items that are kept beyond the due date, so you can see that where the fine free period began, there was actually a drop, and you know, it's kind of up and down, but it looks like we're on the trend of going downward or at least staying steady. And again, this just demonstrates people not taking advantage of the situation and wanting to follow the rules and returning items on time. And the next one. So this is great. So thi- this is actually new patron registrations over the years. And again, like we're coming out of the pandemic. But already for this year, and this was from January to September, we're already above where we were last year. And so we're really proud of the statistic. We're in a town that publishes about five thousand people. And we have about four thousand current, meaning they've used their library card within the last three years. We have about four thousand registered patrons. And again, we accept patrons from beyond just the city. So we've got Malko, we've got McNeil, Double Adobe, but at the same time, we're inching up towards, you know, we're gonna hit the five thousand mark, and I think that's a, it's a pretty good goal, and by golly, we're gonna do it. So you can see there already this year, we've, we've registered over three hundred new patrons. Okay, next. Patron visits, again, we're coming out of the pandemic, but already we've surpassed where we were last year. This goes to show that these, also, I just wanna clarify, these are anyone walking through the doors, and these are visitors visiting Disney. We can't distinguish between who's a, you know, card carrying person and who's just coming in to look at the beautiful space. But even so, we're looking at forty-five thousand people coming through our building at the end of September. Is this all of them or just the downtown? This is both. Yeah. And the next one. So physical checkouts. Sad to say, we're not where we were in two thousand and nineteen, but we are heading back to where we used to be. So it's been a, it's been a, a slow incline coming out of COVID. But we're looking pretty good. And again, this was just through September, so we've got a couple of months to try to beat that two thousand and nineteen figure. But we're looking at over forty thousand checkouts just from January to September. We had our record in two thousand and nineteen, and that's the most that I've ever seen since I've been at a public in library, but we, we went over fifty thousand, so that just shows that people are coming in, they're checking things out, they're, they're, they're using us for all the right reasons.
Must have been judging one of that big awards.
It could be. Well, things like that, that brings, that is, to a library, we don't need to put someone to find you. And then the next one. This I just threw in because we do have a huge ebook, e-audio book, digital magazine patronage, and, and that's just increasing as more people get devices that they can use to read books. But this is, this is something that is not Um, but this is, this is something that is not included in that other uh, graph where uh, for checkout, so this is its own little entity, but you can see we're, we're, we're always, we're on the rise, and it really took off during COVID because it was really good for people to uh, just sit at home and download books, um, and it stuck, so people are continuing to use it and and more, so. And then the next one. Uh, and that's why I just wanted to, this, this, there's a lot going on here. Um, you know, we, we have our early literacy coordinator uh, working over at the Annex. Um, Allison and Gretchen both work together to create really dynamic, really, you know, programs where kids and families want to come to. Um, obviously, the pandemic doesn't count. We were doing, trying to do Storytime via Zoom. Um, we struggled, uh, but we tried. Um, but this is really great because these are the families that um, are comfortable coming into the library, coming to our programs. Um, there's relief that, you know, they don't have to worry about fines. Um, we feel that it's a, it really plays a part in this statistic, in this statistic. Um, that this, this welcoming place welcomes families and also allows for mistakes to be made. Um, oops, my book is everything. Um, so we're really proud of that, and, and again, that's, you know, we've also started doing larger uh, programs, um, and those numbers are reflected in that really uh, both twenty twenty-two and and the next. And then this just shows um, fees and fines collected um, before. Um, and then this also, a lot of this is the copy and print services that we do. Um, right now, I think, with the only game in town, so a lot of people are using us for that service, which is great, so it does, it more than makes up for any uh, any fines that um, were not collected during this time period.
Yeah, question on this, you, uh, I mean, it's gone up. Do you make money on this? The service, do you make some?
On the printer, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, we're, we're paying for, obviously, our printer and and it was either fax and stuff like that. Um, but yeah, we, we've, I mean, there is over a thousand dollars, that's a monthly figure. Um, and with the lease and the, the coffee charges, I mean, uh, off the top of my head, I'm not gonna
Money generating.
It is, yeah, and the more we advertise that, and you know, I think we're there in the faxing game in town.
Sure.
Now, people still do fax, uh.
Some don't know what a fax.
So yeah, so that, if anyone's concerned about um, a loss of revenue with this new uh, expanded print services, women. And the next.
Hopefully, why isn't it, it worsted wouldn't advance, and now, you know. There we go.
Okay, so this is uh, these are just some, um, I had people email in some comments about what they thought about it. Um, I don't necessarily have to read these. If you want me to, I would. Um, but they're, they're really good. It kind of covers everything from, you know, the city doing the right thing to um, you know, people knowing people who stopped coming to the library because they did have fines. Um, and then the next page is, is just more testimonials. Um, I think I might have been read that one. It said, what good does it do to collect fifty cents here or there? It only causes embarrassment for most and hardship for others. Um, and then this just really highlights, so we're looking, like Allison was talking about, we're looking at any kind of barrier, not just a, an economic barrier. Um, and we really do, we try to identify those, and we try to come up with programs and services that either remove that barrier or that we do build a bridge. Um, and I'll just quickly go through these, but um, opening up the Annex in San Jose was a huge uh, geographical barrier, people that weren't coming to Old Disney, um, didn't have the transportation, and yeah, we add to celebrating five years in December, which is really amazing. Uh, technology, the, the technological divides, uh, we've got our local hotspot lending program. Um, we have a device advice program where people can bring in their devices and ask questions and get answers. Um, and we participate in the federal E-Rate program, bringing us a whole gig of uh, internet to the public library, which is huge. Um, physical disabilities, we um, with the free program we got, uh, we added ADA ramps to our dockings, so people can um, safely enjoy the view. Um, and uh, with premier alliances, we've uh, they donated a magnifier for um, that people can use with low vision. Um, the unhoused, we have special programs. We work with, with the Tintown Resource Center and the Women's Transition Project uh, to provide, provide services for those people when they're temporary residents. Um, we uh, do outreach to Gork Park lunches. Um, we're coming up on December. We, we're doing our health and hygiene caring kits uh, for our at-risk patrons. Um, and I'm gonna put this in here, the new HVAC system that we're so anxiously anticipating is gonna um, really provide a warm place in the winter, a cool place in the summer. Um, and that's, that's huge for people that don't have anywhere to be. Uh, we have a lot of people that come and just um, use our library, sit and read all day, uh, use the computers, um, just to be indoors. Um, cultural, we have new collections with a focus on representation of underserved communities, and obviously economic, uh, we're trying to remove that barrier deliberately, getting rid of these other fines. And uh, this is just interesting, uh, each year I do, uh, for the Library Advisory Board, I do a library value calculator, so this is set up from, um, I didn't create this, but uh, you just plug in the numbers, everything's assigned a price, and it just shows you uh, what people would have paid at the big um, list price for our items, obviously. Um, they're getting them for free when they check out, but it's a fantastic number, a return on investment, so the initial investment of two hundred and twenty-five thousand uh, dollars. Um, we would have made over one point five million, so that's a six hundred and six percent on the city's investment. Um, and then I just included, uh, I make these uh, visual statistical posters for our patrons, just so they can see what what gets checked out. And and just a reminder uh, that we aren't just books. We've got a whole slew of programs um, that we think are just really cool, and our patrons, uh, I have to just plug the Act One Culture Pass, which you can check out free admission to cultural places um, in Tucson and Phoenix, and uh, one in Coates County, the Emerald Museum, our seed library, which people can check out, um, three packs of seeds, uh, and our tool lending library at the Annex, which um, people don't have to buy a tool for one project they're working on, they can come check it out. Um, and just to throw the other things, it's, um, we really, you know, I don't know if any library is just books now, and you know, but we're really pushing um, what we can do as a library. I, you know, if you could put a barcode on it, I feel like you can check it out, so. And and just to um, you know, we, we do so much uh, with, with the, the children of Visby and our surrounding areas, and this, this were just snapshots of some of the images that we captured um, at our library, and you know, a lot of what we do, we do uh, for kids. Um, and I think this is just a testament of that. And then just uh, obviously, we're not alone. We, we just, we have many, many partners that we work with um, to make things happen. Uh, and then in just conclusion, I really wanted to thank you for the opportunity to have this time to really um, show what the library could be without fines. Um, obviously, we've had really good feedback. Um, and really good participation in uh, both collections and programs. Um, and we just feel that uh, it's time to make this permanent and um, and to make it happen, so I'll answer any questions if anyone has anything.
Well, I, I do want to bring one thing up that we met with the governor's staff a few weeks ago about they want to come down and with your help, we'll span up a big thing where the internet availability, I think that's your E-program, thirty dollars off a month, yep. They can actually come down and sign you up that, yum it, and then also, we're looking at applying, we can get free computers, desktops, and laptops, and all coming with Word on it, everything is on there, that will be donated and you can find a slot for them, and they'll do an internet service for those, so that could maybe something we can stand up as a after we go. And it's, um, you know.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. We, we, yeah, we, we met um, Allison and myself and and Mr. Parkin, met with him, yeah, and yeah, we're already planning, uh, cool, yeah.
Yeah, I made that announcement, uh, you know, David Moore, so, yes, yeah, so I just wanted to it was because I had to reach out to one of the, the governor's staff and said, hey, we have a lot of people near the airport, and, and so they called up with me on that, and I think that, I think that would be a great program. Pushing hard with it. Anyway.
President.
I would just like to say that uh, fines are a relic of the past, and then we've seen what Jason and company has done here at this library, made it successful, brought it to the twenty-first century, and, and we see other libraries throughout the nation that have done away with these fines because they really are a relic, and they don't serve any purpose other than supposedly teach people how to pull themselves up by their bookstuffs with a bunch of baloney. They don't. Um, so I, I, I see, and we're dealing, obviously, Jason and company are professionals. They know what is, should be done, and I think we should listen to them and approve this.
In the comments?
I, I just want to say, I think what Jason and, and his staff have done for the library is a tremendous improvement over where we were, you know, many years ago. Um, I use a lot of the services there. Um, but when you get the HVAC, I hope you don't take out that little fire place that I've loved. I could stay there all day, um, but no, I think you guys have done a tremendous job, and uh, although I, I kind of agree with Mr. Parkin that, you know, it's kind of a we should all be taking our things in on time, although I am guilty of being late on some of my returns. Um, but, but you're right, if, I know, but if, if we are, I mean, I've used the print services um, several times. And um, if we're making up revenue there to cover that, then, you know, I don't see why why we shouldn't take the revenue.
It wasn't ever a big revenue thing, but, right, yeah.
But, but it was something.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just one.
Okay.
I, I was hoping tonight you would tell us a, a wonderful story about someone who hadn't brought a book back for a year, and after it ditched the fines that came back.
Oh, well, that, I mean, it did happen. I, I there, um, yeah, and sometimes
That's what I needed to hear.
We could have brought a little bit of the
No, no.
Okay.
Don't
Yeah.
No, we did get, uh, this
I was gonna if you give me a little bit of time, I'd probably have been fined somewhere.
Yeah, so we, we need a feel-good story like that, but anyway, thank you. Uh, just, uh, and, and of course, my, my, my earlier comments, I still uh, feel that there's an element of personal responsibility here. Um, statistically, um, you know, from, from my point of view, I don't know that anything was really conclusive, but it didn't get worse.
Right.
Okay, so if we do no harm, then I'm usually gonna work for you.
All right.
Okay.
Right, that's what I wanted, was just enough to know that we're not getting, like, all of a sudden, nothing's coming back, right?
We don't want that either.
Yeah.
Now, if things should reverse, further on down the road where you're noticing that people just aren't returning items, could you please bring it to our attention?
Yeah, because we can keep track of, of that, and, and we do, and, and, yeah, we'll just
When they don't return anything, then there is a
Yes.
So, yeah, we have to be at rest, at least getting there soon.
Yes.
One thing.
Motion, I move to approve Resolution R dash twenty-three dash zero four, amending the library section of the city's fee schedule by eliminating late fees overdue to library materials for all patrons.
Second.
We have a motion to approve Resolution R dash twenty-three dash fourteen, re, I'm sorry, Revolution R dash twenty-three oh four, amending the library section relating to library fines. Um, so resolution, so it's just all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Oh, it is a roll.
You said it, but your brain did something else. Gotcha. Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Giacominio. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Sui.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Which is that's the announcement.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's faithful. Okay. We want a new business. New business will be discussion about the approval of Resolution R dash twenty-three fourteen, renewing the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Disney and Arizona Department of Revenue for transaction privilege tax. Administration tax, I guess. This is where I find out when I read it that you really can't tell me anything about what's going in. Only that, only that.
So hard to ask.
Go ahead, uh, Sarah.
So this is a resolution to renew the IGA between the City of Visby and Arizona Department of Revenue, um, which is such a, um, collecting, distributing, um, city sales taxes. Um, this now is having to be renewed every year, and, and it's required by the state statute that they collect their taxes for us, so.
So we don't have an option.
Don't really have an option.
Don't do it.
And, and this, um, this IGA was developed with the Department of Revenue along with the other cities and towns, town representatives in Arizona.
But it is, you correct things. We want to pass it to keep our, keep them in. Yeah, anybody want to?
Uh, I move to approve a, a resolution R twenty-three dash fourteen, renewing the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Visby and the Arizona Department of Revenue for administration of the city's transaction privilege tax.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution R dash twenty-three fourteen, renewing the IGA between the City of Visby and the Arizona Department of Revenue. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Sui.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes, and I'm, so I move. Moving on to item five, this will be the discussion about the approval of the employment agreement between the City of Visby and Stephen Pop and our city manager. Uh, I'm bringing it back to you, just that we could have just gone with renewing what we had, but I just thought it would be good to bring it back and combine, I think, he's been brought up to get a little more on vacation, but and we're going to uh, pay him what we would have paid some of the other, and so this is a the new revised contract, a much revision by Will. Hey, any more comments on?
I have a couple, actually.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, uh, the term of the employment, it says um, indefinite. Uh, I, I know Joe's not here, but this is not something I, I haven't seen in my, my life where we would employ somebody, someone indefinitely. It should have a timeframe, uh, renewal with options, uh, because it puts us at a disadvantage, so I'm wondering how how this came about, indefinite. It seems like, to be honest with you, I have to discuss it because I'm true to myself and uh, seeing contracts. It seems like this was made on behalf of Steve, not on behalf of the city here. Couple of things, that it's indefinite, but if he decides, uh, if we decide to eliminate his uh, his um, which means he can stay for as long as he wants. And if we decide for some reason, for emptiness or for not doing his job, we have to pay him three months in advance, but he can just resign and uh, get, get everything, he's not, you know, uh, he does not lose anything. get, get everything, it's not, you know, uh, he does not lose anything, so. I really would like to, I hope Joe was here so he can answer some of those questions. Uh, just, yeah, I'm concerned about those. Okay, I'm, I'm, wait, let me, let me finish, sir, let me finish.
Who's the answer?
Yeah, you can give the answer, you have the right, and this is not personal. This not, no, uh, I mean, this is not personal, it's, it's, it's the way the contract was written, so.
In the charter.
Okay, in the charter, indefinite?
It, it, it serves at the, at the pleasure of mayor and council.
Yeah, but, but then it's a disadvantage, we have to pay him, is it in the charter, we have to pay him three months?
Well, that's the standard across every city manager's job, that if you fire somebody, you have to pay them in severance, if they quit, then they don't get.
But if we decide we don't want to keep him, whatever reason, and is, let me repeat this, it's not personal, it's not about the person. Yeah, no, no, I just wanna make sure, yeah, uh, three months? I mean, uh, why couldn't we have negotiated this? Because, to be honest with you, I mean, the hiring situations, what have gone in the past few weeks, we've had situations where affected the way we went about employing people and, uh, and I'm concerned, I'm, and to be honest with you, let, let me put this here, I'm concerned as how this went about. We have a city manager that submitted his resignation, uh, and then we still have two months. Well, he, he said it was announced that he was gonna resign, he was gonna resign.
Sir, 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 he never, I never, I, listen, I never received, I never, sir, I never received a letter of resignation.
Then why didn't we go look for a new city manager? Why didn't we apply, why didn't we go through the motion to hire a city manager? I'm just talking about the procedure because it's like, we, we never looked at our job.
Excuse me, when you're saying that he submitted a letter of resignation, that.
No, you said it was resigning, yeah, he was resigning and we went looking for a new city manager.
Okay, but that's not.
It's under record.
I'm correcting.
On, on the record, we went.
Sir, and listen, listen, I'm correcting.
Don't talk to me like this, don't say, listen, listen, be polite, please.
Yeah, well, then let me speak, you're sorry.
I'm so defensive, Kenny, you're always defensive, you are defensive, no one can say anything without you being defensive. I'm asking simple questions here.
And I'm trying.
We are, we are entrusted.
You're not allowing me to.
I have city manager, but I need to finish, we, 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 we put, uh, we, we went hunted by city manager and then all of a sudden, well, we're gonna pay him one hundred and twenty-five, therefore, let's pay this one hundred and twenty-five. It just, it just, the way we went about it was wrong, was wrong, if he had, he, he was leaving, we, we still have two months, we, we still have two months to find it. And then, and, 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 and at one of the meeting, I recommended that we have an agency, our personnel, our city managers told that, we can do it. It seems like we couldn't do it. We, we, we supposed to have, have an agency.
You're out, you're, you're not, that is not what's in front of us, okay, you're.
No, this is for discussion. If you, if he didn't want it, we should not have brought it here, it's for discussion.
But hiring a new person is not in anything in front of us right now, and you're going way off topics, sir. Do you understand that?
I understand, I'm not going off topic, no, don't be defensive again, on the avenue, don't be defensive. You are defensive, because the way the decision here, we gave an increase of twenty-five thousand dollars because we supposedly to have paid hundred twenty-five thousand. This is well entrusted with the city finances, we supposed to be a, uh, looking over this, not just yeah, and they, yeah, and they, this is not the way it's run. And here we have, we have, we have a lot of situations with management of the city recently, hiring, not checking background, and missing a lot of issues.
Sir, you're now way off of topic. I just thought, let you stay on topic, sir.
I'm gonna stay on the topic.
Well, then let me finish my sentence, you are then interrupting, who's being defensive, sir?
You are, you most of the time, you are, you are being defensive, sir.
Because you're not letting me finish your question, you asked one question, I'll answer it. This is a standard contract that's given across almost everything, sir.
No.
Yes, no, well, I, yes, you know, sir, sir, again, you interrupt me, that is rude. Can I say my piece before you interrupt?
You don't have to say it, what rude?
This called be offensive?
No, I mean, everybody knows you're defensive.
So, the point being is, I work with the latest season down, I work.
Why, why could it find you, why couldn't, I mean, like a manager?
There you go.
When I stood there and said, let's have negotiations, you go have the manager, all right, you and everybody, we are able to do it.
I'm gonna call for a vote on this, all right? I'm done with this, so, sir, you done your piece, thank you very much. But if you won't allow me to speak, then I guess.
Yeah, yeah, you can go ahead, I'm done.
Oh, second back. All right. So I move to approve the employment agreement, this is Stephen Parkin, we're giving that. I'm starting before. We have a motion and a second. For the city, uh, item number five, which is the third, the employment agreement between the city of Bisbee and Stephen Parkin. All those in favor, should, I'll just go roll.
Councilmember Hill. Okay, uh, councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Sui.
No.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes, four more. Four more. Okay, moving on, item six. Item six would be a possible approval of a water pump repair on the public works two thousand and eighteen sewer vacuum. Nothing good.
Good evening, mayor, council, uh, before we go in further than this, I wanted to give you an updated, uh, quote on this that I received today. Thank you. It's my. So this vacuum truck, um, was, uh, taken up to velocity, uh, for a couple of different things, one for the pump and, um, was, was the main thing, they found a couple of other things while I was up there, um. At first, they thought it was just the, uh, back seal for the, the, the pump, um, and let me preface, the pump is not like a water pump on the chassis, this is the pump that runs the back of the pump. Big pump, not just a small pump, you did at the hardware store, just wanted to make sure that was clear, for the price, um. And once we had, they had, um, another company, Baylar, which is who this was purchased from, came down and took a look at it. Um, they had, they looked into it and seen that it needed to be completely replaced. Um, so I got a price for that and, uh, a couple of weeks ago, about the three weeks ago, close to the last council meeting, and, uh, since then, I hadn't heard anything, um, and was, um, bringing this, uh, to council, reached back out to them to get, make sure, see what's, what's going on, make sure, have the right price, and I ended up con, contacting Baylar since they were giving us the, the, the price, because they're the ones fixing it. Uh, and he said that they did not give me the right, the right quote. So this quote that you see before you from Baylar equipment, uh, to replace that pump, uh, is twenty thousand instead of twenty-six thousand. So I just wanna make sure that's clear on that for the physical impact. This pump, uh, this vacuum truck is vital, uh, for our wastewater, uh, operation, it's very vital, um. We've had, had it for a couple of months and we've had some close call where we almost didn't get the sewer cleaned out on a place that was backing up. Uh, we've been able to get it, we have priced out other rentals and they're very pricey, so, uh, this is something that we need to get back in services quickly as possible. And if there's any questions, uh, we're willing to answer that. That's my ability.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, is this the only quote you got?
This is from the, uh, drug dealers.
Okay, but I, I keep asking this question, aren't we supposed to get quotations? I mean, uh, this is, we come, we come to, to this and we are always saying, oh, this is because, and this is because. It seems like we, every time violating policies here, this is the twenty-five, that, that was in dollars, I mean.
This is the only place I can get this, play, this is where it was blocked, this vacuum truck does, and they're, they're the ones that would be, that plays anything that's on the truck.
It's the dealer.
Uh, just a, a point of information, we also requested of both dealers that Matt talked to, uh, to see if they had what we would call a rebuilt pump. And they don't rebuild, well, they do rebuild, but they cost more than a new one. Yeah, because of the cost of overall, in my opinion, they don't rebuild.
You know, Matt, the only concern I have, uh, you know, and I, I don't like to pick on everything, but the concern I have, it seems like every time we come with this, with these expenditures, I, I believe we not do due diligence, we not, you know, uh, this is my belief, and, and, and convince me that I'm wrong. It's believed, we're doing the easy way, we're doing the quickest way, and that's not the way things are managed.
No.
Yes, that I'm hoping, I'm hoping, and I'm not, and I'm hoping with the, with Steve management that we are cautious about those things, that we are going out and making our best to get the best prices and to get the best service. This is what I'm hoping for.
Yes, and we do regular maintenance on our vehicles.
That's all I just need to hear, because I'm concerned, I, I was concerned about the dump truck, how we went about this, we didn't get any, any. I mean, that's, uh, this is the reason I'm saying this, not to pick any, just need to know that, just we like, I like more due diligence. I mean, for me to approve this money, always come and approve, you bring it in front of us and we approve. And we just get one, one, one paper, one quotation, and, you know, and then we have no option, and we say, well, that's the only thing, that's, this is my, my concern. I'm hoping that due diligence is, is being done, so we are making, because, you know, we don't have all the time, we just have the time to, to approve. So hopefully, that, that's the case, that's all I'm hoping.
If I might say something here, um, to get three or four quotations, you'd have to drag this thing around to three or four different shops, have a look at it, seven hundred dollars each time is a tow. I believe that the, the place that actually deals with these on, on everyday basis and is actually the guru for this, and then the after manufacturer, the, the, the back, if it's on the back, came out and took it apart and looked and said, well, it's, it's toast, I think that's doing our due diligence. All right.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Are you not entertaining, oh, yeah, okay, yeah, wanna make sure.
Sure. Uh, so Matt, you said that this is the manufacturer of this equipment?
This is the manufacturer, uh, what, uh, dealer that does everything for it. The, the, the back door part is, uh, the company that builds the, not the chassis, but the back part that, you know, use, that tucked out all sewage and everything, uh, and I certify, uh, it's called Backon.
Okay.
Baylar is a representative for that company to do any service for Backon.
Are there any other um, representatives that does the service for the Backon?
There was one company that Velocity reached out to, and they said they could not do that type of work.
So your due diligence was to look at and investigate other companies that could be a possible, uh, servicer or replace the, or repair the.
Yeah, and Backon warranties work from their, their representative dealers that do the work.
Okay, that was your due diligence, and we've come up with a lower bid than what we had before, okay, thank you.
Actually, Backon, they're back east someplace that actually builds the units, and I looked at the whole thing when I.
Another, another thing with looking at what Mr. Parkin mentioned about, um, uh, do, rebuilding, uh, rebuilding it, uh, and ordering those parts takes a lot longer than ordering the pump, which they have, Backon has in stock, and shipping it. Uh, and that's one thing that we have to look at is getting this truck back in service, because we, this is, like I said, we have to have this truck in order to really operate our, with our sewer, uh, systems. Um, if we have overflows, uh, that's called an SOS. Uh, I can't remember right now what it's, what it stands for, uh, then we have to write reports to ADQ on that, what, what happened with that, so.
Yeah, these pumps, pump anywhere on the board eight hundred V is like, so it's, it's a, it's a very, very strong pump, that's how it blows everything out. Yeah.
I, I have one more question, how long you've had this truck?
Uh, since twenty eighteen, city bought a brand new.
The new one's about two hundred and something down.
Correct.
I looked at.
Yeah, and this thing has been running hard from day one.
Oh, yeah, we have a lot of old super.
Yes, sir. It's, it's used two, three, three or four times a week.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve to have water pump repairs in public works in twenty eighteen sewer vacuum truck.
I'll second that, yeah, but motion and second to approve the water pump repair on our sewer vacuum truck. I was embarrassed to invite you saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, nay, I mean, I'm the I pilot, so move. On item seven, this is discussing possible approval, notes intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-three dash sixteen. This is accepting a transfer of real property from the Southeast Arizona Red Corporation, LLC located, excuse me, at one twelve Nighthawk in Bisbee. Um, is this under emergency also, and? No, you could not, okay. One time we do this, you know.
We don't need to do this.
So, why don't you give this a bit of an overview of the work, what's happening?
Yes, and I, I, I prepared just a little bit of information, because each time we've been coming for you, we've been getting some actually really good questions from you, so I thought I'd tell you a little bit about one twelve Nighthawk that you are gonna take to this resolution tonight. Um, this property is projected to be completed in about the next, what, eight weeks or so. Um, and so it's a property, when we looked at it, we thought it should be completely blown down, but um, step up Bisbee Naco has done an excellent job with this. So the property is a two bedroom, two bath, uh, has a separate laundry room, and it's approximately a thousand twenty-five square feet. Uh, I can also tell you that there was a realtor assessment done, which is much different than an appraisal. Um, and that realtor assessment came in at a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. So if you do the numbers and you deduct the twenty percent of that, you're gonna come in anywhere from one forty to one forty-three to, to a hundred, so you're gonna be setting the price at one forty. Uh, I guess I wanna say this property has a septic tank. Um, we've already gone through the ADQ, all of that's been checked out, I have certificates for the new buyer. Um, house is cute, um, they're down to getting cabinets and stuff in, so. Um, currently, without doing any advertising, um, I have four interested buyers that meet the criteria um, to potentially buy this, two of them are already pre-qualified. Um, so I just, I just wanted to give you a little perspective on what these houses, how we're doing. Uh, this will be number five for this year, once this is sold. Um, number six is in the works and number seven will be coming after that. Um, we've just been tremendously successful with this, and, and I wanted to let you know.
Good, great. Any questions about? Our next report, so.
I just, I, I thank you, Paul, for what you've been doing.
Yeah.
I have a question, right there. Did I miss it, or did you say how many bedrooms this one?
This one's a two bedroom, two bath.
Okay, and the, the ones that we are looking at are gonna be.
So the one that'll be ready next is going to be a three bedroom, two bath, and that'll be in the Saginaw area, they're already working on that. And then the one after that is most likely gonna be two bedroom, two bath.
Okay.
So the three bedrooms have been harder to buy, to rehab, um, and to, to design. But clearly, I can tell you by whom I show these homes to, especially the families that they're needed, so um, we do have a three bedroom coming up.
You don't have an idea how much it costs gonna be?
Of the next one?
Yeah.
I think we're gonna typically, it's in Saginaw, so I'm gonna say we're gonna be in the same range. Um, I, I can honestly say I was a little surprised to see the one seventy-nine, um, but absolutely, you know, and then I, Steve, Mr. Parkin and I did the calculation, so that we will really do sell. Steve, Mr. Parkin and I did the calculation, so that we will really do sell it twenty percent under, well, now, um. After tonight, then we will own the house, and, um, as we sell, it'll, we'll take a look at how they're doing, they're down payment and. And, you know, we kick in some closing costs and, um, try to make the best deal for the eligible buyer that we can. Not aware you're gonna go get a brand new, up to bottom house, even in Bisbee at one forty right now, yeah.
Great. All right, um, any other questions? Any kind of motion?
I move that we approve the notice intent to adopt ordinance zero dash twenty-three dash sixteen. Accepting the transfer of real property from Southeast Arizona Renovations LLC. Located at one twelve Nighthawk Bisbee.
Second.
Got the motion and a second to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-three dash sixteen.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Suede. Mayor Protem Klein. Mayor Budge.
Aye, this is five zero. Uh, thanks for the new business, uh, last night you've been sitting at it.
Yeah, thank you, um. A couple of things, uh, first, since Mr. Miller came tonight and was appointed to the civil service commission, I would also like to. Spend a moment introducing him, uh, as one of the new employees at Cego. And, uh, community development, I guess.
Before the community economic.
Yeah, and, uh, so, uh, he's new to the community, he's new to Cego, uh, and as you know, we. Rely on Cego for a lot of administrative services that we can't do ourselves, and so I just wanted to say welcome. David here, and thank you for stepping up, uh, for an appointment to, uh, Board of Commission. Second thing is, and and I just want, I want to go home tonight. And we can't discuss this now, because I didn't put it on on the agenda, but. There was an executive session at the last council meeting. Uh, everything to do with the employment of the city manager was discussed at that executive session. Not everybody was at the executive session, but the good news is, is that Arizona State Law House. A city council member who is not able to be present at an executive session to get briefing from mayor and for the city manager. About what happened in that meeting. And so I think it would be incumbent. And I I wish this discussion hadn't take place tonight, because it cheapens. It cheapens. The importance of what we're doing here, whether it's me or whether it's anybody else, okay? I just happen.
I I I want to make something to you, you can't just say whatever you want to say. You know what, I've heard that before, you know, you use this thing, I I don't think you hear this.
I'm asking you to come and see us.
I would, but I would use this, that, well, then I could not respond to you, that's, oh, that's unfair, Steve. You know the rule, I cannot say anything, you can say whatever you want to say, and I couldn't say anything, so that would be wrong, so it would be wrong with you, if you want, you can.
And you just tried to drop out, and I did not. I didn't, I didn't say Mel wasn't there, did I?
No, no, I wasn't there, exactly, yeah.
I was trying to.
You're trying to pass on something where I can not respond, that's not fair, this wasn't on the agenda, we should not. Oh, no, no, I'm not a politician, I'm not a politician, I've seen my performances, as 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 a city manager, you're a good politician, I have to get you. But in the end, we need a city manager.
We would like to stay until we adjourned.
Okay, but don't say anything about this, I'll say, just, I'll participate, but don't say anything pertaining to this, all right?
Mr. Mary, let me prove my review.
Okay, good.
All right.
I would make most to adjourn.
Second, all in favor, and lots of negative journals, I don't think if I was saying not.